She's coming, she's coming. She's coach.
So we're being evaluated?
Yeah, we should hand that over. She informs.
You have to let us know if we're doing a good job.
So the school clock says 5:30, but Verizon says 5:20.
That's what I was about to say.
It's up to you, you're the board.
Two minutes.
Call us to order according to the school clock at 5:30. Because I know that you're...
I'm getting to something, unfortunately, I really like to see the kids. It's what's tearing up here right now.
Missing something, Ken.
I know.
So I will receive our guests. Hello. I'm going to skip us right to Bill because we do have to go.
Yeah.
And then we will get to this presentation that we all want to see.
So first of all, seriously, students, I want to apologize for not staying. Because this is a meeting, so I'll come back and see. Is it going to be up tomorrow? Or is it going down?
It has to get down before 9:30 tomorrow.
Because I could be here at 10:00 or 10:30. Anyway, I need to talk to you.
I'll have to watch the video.
Yeah, I'll have to watch the video. So apologize to guys for not staying. I need to talk to you about the non-bargaining contracts at the bottom. So we'll move to there. I would like to recommend to you as a board that if you take action to approve the non-bargaining contracts, which are three personnel. For the principal, it would be the same as the negotiated agreement. For the teachers, which is 2.6%. And for the other two personnel, it would be the same as the ESP, which is 3.5%. That would be our bargaining position.
Anybody have any...
Should we have a motion? I make a motion to accept Phil's recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion about Phil's recommendation?
Was that a similar recommendation in the other districts?
Well, this is the first time I've made it, so we're making it from tonight.
But the assumption is that...
We're going pretty much in that area.
Danger.
Yeah. That, I mean, the other two personnel that are covered do supervise ESP, and it's appropriate for them to get the same raise as the folks they supervise. And that's true for Alicia as well.
Are you okay with that? Yeah.
Further discussion? All of those in favor of approving salary increases for non-bargaining employees, please say aye.
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 opposed, abstained? Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Folks, I'm really sorry I'm abstaining. I really feel bad.
Do you want to come up? Somebody's taking this place, though, and she will be a great audience.
Safe to face.
I'm wondering, for the students, if you could introduce yourselves, and maybe they could, they're going to introduce themselves when they come up, each of them, but do you want to let the students know who you are?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Flor. I'm Lincoln's mom.
I'm Lindy, and my kids finished here a bit ago. And I taught here for a while. And now I'm on the boards.
I'm Ruben. I'm Lacey's dad, and she's in first grade. And I'm the dad of Kalen, who's in 10th grade, and Justin, who is an early college senior.
And I'm Steve, and my son Steve's a senior at U32 right now.
I'm Jen. I'm the curriculum director for the Supervisory Union. I'm also a parent, so I have a 7th grader and a 9th grader at U32.
And you all know one. So before we have you come up, because I know you have a lot to share with us, and I want to make sure we get to that really quickly. But before we do that, just to share with the board, did you each have a little packet? How many, are there four presentations or three?
Four.
Four. So I gave you enough for each of the presentations, because they're all a little bit different. But just a couple of things to know while all the students come up. This afternoon, hot off the press, if you look at the back, this is a new document that is, it just kind of explains really briefly what each of those are, just to help you. And really, you're not looking for whether or not the students learned, and it's a little, but whether or not they had the opportunity. So you're not evaluating their learning, or their speaking, or any of that. But it's really, was the opportunity there for one of the student learning outcomes or transferable skills? Anything you want to add to that?
No.
Okay, are we ready? Should we turn to face?
Can I just give a two-minute introduction?
Yes. Should we turn to face this way?
I think that I will have them go stand up there, because they're going to have a lot of presentations. And I'll come up here, because I realized that my computer just went to sleep, and I can't get into it. But I wanted to start by saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to come. And I wanted to let you know a little bit of background. When Alicia put out to the staff, was anyone interested? I decided to present it to the students, see if the students were interested. And I immediately had, as you can see, I have, I believe, 15 arrived tonight. We've got one that we're still waiting for, we may have to fill in for. And there were probably three to four that had prior commitments, that they could not get out of. So I am really, really proud that they wanted to come, they wanted to share, although a couple of them, at the last minute, said, "You didn't tell us." We were being videotaped. But it has been their presentation from the beginning. I said to Alicia that this will be representing, the four presentations are not just representing my classroom. You will see a representation, well, actually, two, of integration with Arlen in technology class. You will see an integration with the art teacher and technology in a presentation. And you will see a little bit of what's been happening in the last 12 weeks in reteach in my room. I have 24 students, and we're doing something very different, where we're focusing on transferable skills through an individual learning of choice. They had to create a contract with me, they'll tell you about that, so I don't want to take that away from them. But you'll see a wide variety of projects. And I just want to say, I'm really proud of each and every one of these kids, as well as all the rest. They couldn't make it here, because they worked so hard. They took this so seriously, they wrote their scripts. I told them that was fine, they could have it in front of them, and so I hope you enjoy. So, the first one, you guys can come up front while I'm trying to get this ready.
I have to move down, because I'm sitting around Steven, but no.
I'm just getting a new Dell combination laptop notebook kind of thing.
Hi, I'm Eda.
I'm Maya.
And I'm Lily.
We are all students in Mrs. Shedd's class. And we are here to talk about poetry and watercolors.
This year, we started living about poetry and watercolors.
We learn lots of new techniques. Some of them were sponging, is when you use a sponge to dab on the paper. Temporary paint is white paint usually used to snow. And crayon runnings are when you rub crayon on your artwork to make it look cool. We also learn lots of types of poetry. Some of them are list, haiku, tonka, shinkane, and akrostic. All of these types are written differently. For example, a haiku is a three-line form of poetry. The first line has five syllables, the second line has seven syllables, and the last line has five.
We use student learning outcomes when we are making poetry and watercolors. We use artistic expression when we are making watercolors. We use literacy when writing the poetry, when we add figurative language or onomatopoeia.
This year, we participated in Poem City. Poem City is a month-long poetry festival, where everyone from Mont who wants to, ages 2 to 95, creates a poem and gives it to Kala or cover. And they put them up in the windows of stores around Montpelier. There are over 500 poems in total, and some of them are even put up in the Adamant Co-op. There are three poems from our class in the window of Woodbury Mountain Toys, while the rest are put in the haze from Matt Kala cupboard.
Our poems were put into the Poem City Easter egg hunt. Lots of people could find them, because they were hidden inside of the plastic egg. The Easter egg hunt took place on April 1st and lasted until the end of that day. A connection from a classmate said that someone found his poem in an Easter egg that nobody found. So that person, an Eastmont affiliate resident, and grandmother of a pre-K student, sent the classmate a letter and said that they found his poem. The student also received a poem.
Thank you all for listening to our presentation. We hope that you enjoyed it. We would like to invite you to look at some samples of different types of poetry done by our class at the end of the other presentations. Thank you.
So do you want to share our results? This is the presentation where we have students.
Here, how about I do this first part, then you do this part, then I do this part, and you do, like, you can just go...
Just figure it out, that's enough.
Okay, you, yeah, you just do R as R, okay? Okay.
Yep, alright. My name is Avery.
My name is Sarah.
We are going to present the Five Six Green Screen Art Project. We are all in Mrs. Shedd's classroom. Both the 5th and 6th grade classes did this project.
There are a lot of learning outcomes that were incorporated with this project. These were the receipt, technology, artistic expression, and transferable skills. The process to making this video presented included choosing a famous artist to study, doing research about the artist, and making artwork, representing the artist's artwork. The green screen is a green cloth background that you stand in front of and film yourself. With the green screen, you could change the background you're standing in front of using color keying in the WeVideo app. The other steps were to write a script and talk that talks about the famous artist. Videotape themselves, talking about our artists, and then upload our videos to WeVideo. From here, we changed the backgrounds where the green screen was. Where the green screen was, some students added music and cited sources in the video. After those steps, we posted our videos in Google Classroom, and we commented on each other's videos there. Google Classroom is a place where you can post projects, texts, or responses to other classmates' projects. Your peers give feedback and comments about your post. We each have a different artist that we will be teaching you about, that have unique art styles. We hope you learn about them by watching our videos. Enjoy.
In this presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about Georges Pierre Surratt, a famous artist. He was born on December 2nd, 1859. He was born in Paris, France. To make his artwork, he used oil paint either on wood or on canvas. Georges Surratt also used brown ink and pen on graphite, gold, and paint. This art was a pioneer. It is supposed to represent Georges Surratt's artwork. I made it with little dots, because he made a piece of artwork that looked like it was made of little dots too. I don't know. Sadly, Georges Surratt died on March 29, 1891.
The artist I am interviewing is Alexander Calder. Calder was born in July 22nd, 1876. Calder used many types of materials. He used metals, wires, and yellow white paint. I think Calder used black ink to use metals and wires to create her. He is known for making the miniature circus. And never quite died in 1876.
There we go. Hold it right now.
Yeah, just leave this. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Aaron's student, that was a lot, that you got.
Should we start?
Yeah.
I'm Tucker.
And I'm Erin.
We've done many things in our Five Six class. One of the really fun things this year was infographics.
In this project, we use some learning outcomes.
They were literacy, some artistic expression, technology, global citizenship, and transferable skills.
Both Class 6 classes made our infographics in technology and regular class.
An infographic is a way to show information by using pictures and graphics and not using as many words.
Our infographics were about famous explorers, what we could rule out on ships, or any other thing that was connected to early exploration.
Some things that we did our infographics on. I did Njellum versus Drake. A kid in our class did Carabel versus Karak, and Erin did Christopher Columbus.
We did our infographics on a website called Canva, and then printed them out.
The reason that we did the infographic on early exploration is because we were in a unit about early exploration.
There was a process to our work.
First, we learned what an infographic was.
Then we made up all three questions on early exploration that we wanted to research.
Some examples were comparing two explorers, comparing a Carabel to a Karak, who circumnavigated the world faster, number of ships sailed with, and who traveled through.
The next step we did was that we had to research our questions.
For instance, if you did who circumnavigated the world faster, you would look up your explorer, and then look up the other explorer.
Then you would research about who circumnavigated the world faster.
Then after we researched our question, Miss Hong showed us how to get Canva and try a tutorial.
After that, we started working on our infographics in Canva.
The last step was we got a three-fold board and put our infographic on it, along with some other things that we did while we were learning about early exploration.
Thank you for listening to our talk on Five Six and Infographics.
If you look over there, you will see some examples from some students' infographics.
Hello, we are students from Mrs. Shedd and Ms. Gallagher's 5th and 6th grade classes. We will be showing you what we have done in reteach with Mrs. Shedd during the last unit. This is Lincoln, that's Paige, Isaac, Ryan, Kristen, Yvette, and Seela. I am Maria. We are all part of the reteach group. I hope you enjoy our presentation.
One thing we focused on during reteach is transferable skills. This project also included student learning outcomes in the academic areas of reading, writing, science, and global citizenship. In the beginning of the unit, we filled out a contract, which helped us plan for our project and helped us budget time, which is a transferable skill. Our contract included three essential questions we had about our topic. We each had the opportunity to choose a topic that interested us. For example, I chose to research dyslexia.
We spent the first couple of classes researching and taking notes. Soon it was time to start. Some people chose to use Google Slides, Canva, poster boards, planning, other creative ideas to present their projects. Most people will share our projects with the whole group, showing what we have learned about our topic.
And this is my presentation, Dyslexia. What is dyslexia? Dyslexia is reading disability. Some kids who get dyslexia only have a small face, but others may have bigger faces. If you have dyslexia, you have a harder time learning how to read and write. The brain. The brain has two sides, one side, the left side, is for reading, writing, language, logic, and math. The right side of the brain is for creativity, music, and art. People with dyslexia want to use the right side of their brain more than the left. That makes it harder and take longer to read and write. Challenges for children with dyslexia. For children with dyslexia, reading, writing, and spelling are hard. Children with dyslexia may fall behind from other children in their grade. Then they may feel socially insecure and feel bad about themselves. Examples of reading for kids with dyslexia. In this picture, you see that there is a piece of paper. If you look at the piece of paper, you will see that it looks normal. And if you look at the circle, you will see that there are a bunch of letters. That is what dyslexic children see when they are reading. Reading for kids with dyslexia. They have a hard time reading, it's how their brain works. Kids with dyslexia see things the same as people without, it's just how they process the letters. Spelling for kids with dyslexia. Spelling is hard for children with dyslexia. They may spell things the way they sound, not the way they are. For example, some may spell, some children with dyslexia may spell friends as friends. Kids without dyslexia can mature their spelling skills faster than kids with dyslexia. Writing for kids with dyslexia. For children with dyslexia, writing is hard. Part of this is because spelling is hard for them. Also, you can find that in dyslexic children, they will use monosyllabic. They will use monosyllabic. How dyslexia can affect children emotionally. A child with dyslexia may have a hard time understanding a joke, social cues, and they may remember things all on one. Quarters. I think everything about my life is a miracle. I have struggled, and against most odds, I am truly having the experience of living in my dreams, Bella Thorne. Conclusion. I hope after you saw this presentation that you know more about dyslexia than you did before. And the rest of the slides are just sources. My presentation is about bluegrass music. I hope you enjoy my presentation. Bluegrass music by Isaac. Rush to the verses, the names of the instruments. So there's washboard, a dobro, a banjo, a guitar, a mandolin, a bass, and a fiddle. What is bluegrass? Bluegrass music is a style that is made of folk, country, rock, soul, trap, western swing, reggae, and gospel. It's okay if you don't know what it is, because it's not that popular. It started in the Midwest, or Appalachian Mountains, and grew in wax and popularity. Then waned. Background is Bill Monroe, who was one of the fathers of bluegrass. And the rest just says, try to find a hidden mandolin in every slot, but you shouldn't do that, because it's for, if you're looking at it on the computer. Bluegrass instruments. Here's a list of the usual bluegrass bands. If they play more gospel, then they would probably have a guitar player and three people singing. If they do the old time, they would have a fiddle, two people singing, a mandolin, a bass, a banjo, and a guitar. In new grass, they would use instruments that are more like rock, like electric bass guitar, mandolin, electric banjo, drums, guitar, fiddle, and dobro. How bluegrass instruments are tuned usually? A guitar is tuned EADGDE. A fiddle is tuned GDAE. A mandolin is tuned GGDDAAE. A banjo is tuned GDGBD. And a dobro is tuned GDDGBD. And a bass is tuned EADG. Cool. Alright. Bluegrass bands. This one I'm not going to read, because it's way too long, and it's just a list of all the bands I know, including my band, which is, we play bluegrass. Bluegrass local. If you'd like to listen to some bluegrass and not drive a thousand miles, we have bluegrass right here in Vermont. Local bluegrass band is Two Cents in the Till. I've seen them live. This is a band, that's Two Cents in the Till, in the bottom right-hand corner. And the background is a band, a bluegrass band called The House Band, with Stuart Duncan, Dale Flack on the banjo, Edgar Meyer on the bass, Sam Bush on the mandolin, and Jerry Douglas on the dobro, and Brian Sutton on the guitar. That's bluegrass moments. This is basically just all the people I've seen. And thanks to keep you going, if you'd like to go to the Gray Fox Bluegrass Festival, you can click right there. And if you'd like to learn more about bluegrass, you can, there's some stuff on, I think it's World Book. And if you'd like to go to the Falcon Ridge Folk and Bluegrass Festival, there's a one for that, in case you want to buy instruments. It'll get you to places. And if you'd like to go tell you're at Bluegrass Festival, you can see their website there. And if you want an audio sample of what a mandolin sounds like, you can get a mandolin, you just look up mandolin on YouTube, and it'll give you a cam 172 audio sample. And if you want to get a list of all the bands, you can look up bluegrass bands on World Book. These are mandolin boards, guitar boards, banjo finger positions, and reliable instrument brands. So there's Eastman, which I own, I have a mandolin. And down there, there's Eastman on mandolin. And there's Luna, which I own, they make guitars. And my friend owns a Weber mandolin. Another friend owns an Ivannis. And Gold Tone is a good banjo company, and for bass and fiddle. I'm not sure how you pronounce it, but I think it's Cecilio. And this is just about me. Isaac's three days away from being 11 years old, but that was a while ago, so I'm actually 11 now. Lives in Montpelier with his mom, dad, and his two dogs, Martha and Appio. Loves lots of kinds of music and has three string instruments, seems to be four, hopefully. He plays baseball in Skies. He's had lots of fun making this project. He was born in Almaty, Kazakhstan, in Central Asia. Isaac would love if he came down to Stage Street, Montpelier, and listened to his band play some tunes. These are sources, there are way too many. I'm just, yeah, that's it. There's 10, 11, or so, flies on sources, so. So this... So this presentation is about football helmet science and CTE, which is also known as chronic traumatic entomopathy. And I chose this presentation because I always wanted to play football, but when I found out the results in playing football, I decided not to. And the CTE symptoms come from like chronic hits to the head over and over and over again. So when you play football, in one game, you overcome hundreds, maybe in your career, thousands of hits to the head. And when you keep getting hit, you can get CTE. And symptoms are memory loss, confusion, impaired judgment, impulse control, aggression, depression, anxiety, suicide, Parkinson, and eventually dementia. And I don't know if you guys have heard of Aaron Hernandez, who had CTE and they'd never seen it before unless it was somebody who was over 46 and he was 27. And he ended up, he murdered somebody and then he committed suicide in prison. And they think a big reason he did it was because of CTE. And this is the improvement in helmets from 1990 to 2016. They started with leather and then went from plastic to more plastic. And then like around 2015, SG helmets, which is a company, started designing and trying to figure out better ways to not only help skull fractures, but concussions. So the first layer is a load shell, soft outer layer, works like a car bumper, deforming when struck to absorb the blow. So it flexes with the use of the core layer, small columns move in every direction to bend with the force, reducing linear rotational impact. So when they get hit, it absorbs some of the impact. So the reason why there's more brain trauma going directly to the brain. And the hard shell, the hard plastic shell, which is sandwiched between the layers to protect the skull. And the form liner, waterproof textiles and spacious special foams distribute pressure around the head to form a unique hit. So when they get hit, the helmet doesn't move at all, which can help. When it stays on the head, it absorbs more of the hit. And then the chin strap, which is for if you get hit in the chin or if the face mask goes right into the ground, the face mask doesn't go directly into your face. And then Bill Simpson's goal was to prevent extreme brain damage. You cannot stop concussions completely because you can't keep the brain from bouncing off the skull. So in this moving image, it shows that when you get hit, it, your brain bounces off one side and then maybe the other side. But the brain only moves a millimeter because in between the skull and the brain, there's fluid. So it only moves just a little bit. And then my opinion, in my opinion, SG helmets are a great start to helping with brain damage in football, but concussions can't be stopped. So if concussions can't be stopped, CTE can't be stopped. In my life, I'll never be playing football because when I'm 40 years old, I want to be mentally and physically functioning. There have been cases where people who've played football can't function because their brain just doesn't work, it's pretty much crumbling inside their head. And the concussion problem, we all know concussion is a big problem in football. So for example, in this moving image, it shows how that guy's helmet goes directly into his helmet. So there's lots of brain trauma, so he probably got pretty serious concussion. And then there's this one, which is actually a penalty. So refs have changed the rules to protect players a little more, to keep them from dying. And that's it.
You can go ahead and start introducing what you're going to do, Kristin.
Um, I'm, yes, Kristin, I'm going to be doing a presentation on stories of Greek gods from mythology, and I'm going to be sharing my favorite one. Actually, because I can't share my entire thing. Alright, wait, does this still have not? I don't know if it's not loading or if the font just can't be seen on the projector. I apologize for that.
I'm changing it to white and see what.
Oh, do that. Sorry about this. It just says Stories of Greek Gods by Kristin Haynes, so.
That's okay, you can just tell them. So Kristin was quite ambitious, she is not done yet and she's at 31 slides. So I said, you've got to select just a few of your favorites.
So this is my favorite one, and it's actually about Hades and Demeter. Hades is the god of the underworld, and his symbol is the helm of darkness, and he's a son of Cronos and Rhea. Demeter is the goddess of agriculture and the harvest, and her symbol is the heart of plenty. And she is the daughter of Cronos and Rhea. Demeter and Hades have never gotten along either, which, I said either because in a past one, I'm sorry about other, often like each other, but they have very good reason for it, which. Demeter loved her daughter, Persephone, but little did she know that Hades was planning kidnapping her for his wife. Hades asked Zeus if he could marry Persephone and how to get her away from Demeter. Zeus, acting quite corrupted, suggested kidnapping her. So that's exactly what Hades did. While Demeter and Persephone were playing in the fields, Hades decided to act. When Persephone was off picking flowers away from Demeter, he came in on his chariot and carried away, her away to the depths of the underworld. Demeter turned back to find Persephone, but she and Hades were already gone. Demeter hadn't seen Hades take Persephone, so she began to search the earth for her daughter. But when she didn't find anything, she grieved and the earth grieved with her. It got cold and plants started dying. Eventually, Demeter went to Zeus and made him get back Persephone. She threatened him that if she didn't get Persephone back, all the plants on earth would die and they wouldn't grow back. When Zeus told her Hades had kidnapped her, she was furious. So of course, Zeus had to send Hermes, the messenger god, to the underworld to get back Persephone. Hermes went to retrieve Persephone, but when he got there, he couldn't take her back. Persephone had eaten four pomegranates while she was in the underworld. You see, when one consumes food of the underworld, they have to stay there forever. Demeter once again was met, but Persephone was going back to her. The deal was Persephone had to stay in the underworld for four months every year because of the four pomegranate seeds she ate. Then she returned to Demeter. In those four months, Demeter would grieve and the earth grieved with her. No plants would grow. This is most likely how they explained winter. And that is all I have. That's the next slide, but that is the one I'm showing.
I'm Ryan. I study volcanoes and I made a 3D model out of volcanoes. They're over there, to the right, over there, to the left, over there. I built it out of poster board and tape and paper and a bottle. And my real presentation is going to explode, and I learned a lot about volcanoes. All I knew originally is that volcanoes are lava. And now I know that they're formed by earth's crust colliding, going atop each other or going next to each other, and that forms volcanic ash to explode out of the ground, which causes over time to build up and creating a mound with magma inside, which is a volcano. I learned a lot this entire unit of reteach, learning volcanoes and what they do. And yeah, just studying lots of volcanoes. So, yeah.
We would like to thank you for taking this time to listen to our presentations. I think I can speak for all of us. This has been an honor to present and talk in front of you, in front of the MES school board. Please take a few minutes of your time now to take a look at the presentations we have right over there.
And we would like you to take just a few minutes to just walk over and see a sample of more of the.
Thank you. Thank you.
By the end of the season.
It's just us.
I know, it's so quiet.
Unless anybody has agenda revisions. To move us to the consent agenda to approve the minutes of March 28.
Take a motion to approve the minutes of March 28, 2012.
I'll second it.
Any discussion of the minutes of presented?
Seeing or hearing it?
All of you in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Student presentation we have done. However, the observation forms we have brought. So this is where we're going to talk about, this is where we talk about what we observed and all of that. And I want to be the first to admit that I was so engaged watching the presentations that I took really critical notes.
And honestly, they gave, so they worked a long time on this and they told us exactly what we asked. So there is no guessing in any of that.
I think with a presentation like that, that is so encompassing, it's better to watch and pay attention to them than to the paper, I was finding that. Perhaps if I was just wandering through the school on an open house or looking at artifacts on the hall, but even that, I think would be hard to use this. There's obviously indicators of learning. And depending on who was talking about what, where it showed up was. There's no doubt in my mind, these children were learning transferable skills and content.
Yeah, I felt the same way. I felt how hard it would be to be observing a teacher. You know, the job that you guys do, you know how hard it is to like really be paying attention. So I tried at the beginning and then, you know, the other stuff we needed to go see there. But I really, the passion that the kids had and their self-guidance, they all seemed really, regardless of what project they were doing, they all seemed to be so engaged. So I think it's something that I will remember for forever and it taught them something. So that was so great to see that energy.
I think it'd be valuable for, and you have open house nights, but there might be, maybe everybody understands reteach, but I think a lot of people think of it as intervention and help because you're behind or this. But there's such a variety and choice and all of those things. That's what I think was valuable about seeing this. Was it's the importance of choice in education. And this gave children, there was a way variety, and you could see some kids really passionate about a topic, and other ones learning they were passionate about a topic. So that was very good.
I've done like two, I read quickly, like a couple of things. And I think for this form to be useful, we would have to have a lot more training. And I know the intent of evaluating like the outcomes of the transferable skills, but in particular, I was struck by what Flor said, that I think, I feel like I could better inform in generalities rather than specifics. So for me to adequately respond to this form, as they were presenting, I would have had to have been flipping, I would have been paying hardly attention to them at all as compared to like what Flor took away was energy, and that's not something that gets evaluated. And you know, we might all have certain biases that we look for, and I don't say that in a bad way, that with multiple perspectives. So I, I'm thinking more of the structure of it. You know, if I was, if it was one class doing one thing, I might be able to use this. But for me, this is too specific for a board member. You know, maybe if I did this 20 times a year for five years, I would feel good with it. But for me, it's too specific. So you know, even if it was just, you know, the students in discussing their outcomes or discussing outcomes or something like that. And if you did hear that, what kind of outcomes did you hear? They were very good at talking about their outcomes. But that way, I can be paying attention, paying attention, outcomes, okay, they mentioned, they mentioned these two outcomes and it looks to me like there's some literacy. And whether it's an actual outcome or not, it's things that I observe. So structurally for me, that would be better. I agree with particularly what Flor said. I just had, and Ruben, I think, said I had to kind of ignore this and I just made general notes on the bottom.
I was struck by the idea, like we've always had this idea of teaching to the test. And this is maybe the best possible test to teach to. Right? Like I, knowing what we've talked about sort of on a high level and from a layperson's perspective, what we're sort of aiming at, educational room. And then seeing the kids internalize that and be able to to understand what it is that they're actually after was really cool. So I, without sounding too fanboyish, I've been a strong proponent of the student learning outcomes and proficiency-based educational stance since I learned that, because it just makes sense to me. But hearing it and seeing it in the kids, where they understand what it is that they're supposed to get out of this activity is exciting for me because it sort of ticks off what I struggled with as a student and what I have seen generations of other people struggle with, which is the disengagement, why do I need to know this? And I always go back to my experience with Mr. Berry, the geometry teacher. And you know, I will never forget, because it's cemented in my memory, the day that I was like, 10th grade. Why do I need to know how to figure out the hypothesis of a raptor? Never going to have to do a raptor. I'm never gonna have to do a raptor. And, you know, I think it was 10 years ago, I have to figure out the hypothesis. But, you know, that wasn't real to me at that time and, and what these guys were doing was, it mattered to them and so they were engaged in a way that, that geometry class didn't manage to engage me, so.
I agree. I have a physics and a teacher and instructor in college that it was all about baseball. So I was like, oh, this, I can relate to it. So I think that, once you find something that could, that, to them.
Add a takeaway that isn't evaluated. I was very impressed by their adaptability, how, how they adjusted on the fly several times. For, it, it speaks to me less of a specific incident, but more of an overall experience, educational experience, that as fifth and sixth graders, they, they weren't flustered because something didn't work or someone wasn't here or they could've.
Creative and practical problems.
But again, I mean, that's board education to know that that's where, anyway, I'll be quiet.
No, this, this is so helpful for us to hear.
So I just, I did take more specific notes, so I didn't, you know, I, I tend to gravitate to the emotional part, right? So the energy and just like the excitement of the kids, so I love that part. I do when I get better, so I don't, you know, I, I feel like we can all get better at this because now I feel I can be more informed when a parent approaches me and says, you know, whatever, I guess, well, you know, the other day I was at school and I could see that they're doing, you know, there's great content going on in fifth and sixth grade, you know, being, you know, like I did take some more specific notes at the beginning, but then I just wanted to, to, to observe it. So I, I feel like as a board member, I will like to learn a little bit more about how to be a good observer. So we can just, just take a little more time, so maybe like Stephen is saying, to simplify some, some, some things or as it goes, this is our first time, so we'll get, we'll get better at it, but I really enjoyed it. So thank you for putting it together.
I did nothing.
No, I know, but, but telling them to come.
Kids did it all with Ellen's support, but another thing that we had talked, and this was, this was a little tricky because it was very scripted and staged and, I mean, this was the polished end result. But another thing we had talked about, and I wonder if it'd be helpful, and that was recorded, is if you just take it in for the first time and just experience it and then go back and watch and, and try to fill, because you can't, even, you know, when we do observations, we don't capture everything, you know, in the moment, you can't. But I wonder if we were to go back and watch even a piece of it together and maybe went through some of this and could talk more specific, because you've heard it once, you've seen it.
That'd be great.
That might be, that might be really useful, useful research.
Well, and it's one of the things that we've been talking about with this, which is calibration.
Right.
We're looking for the same things.
Yeah.
And I'll echo, I think it was just to everybody, but, you know, having 15, 14 bullet points that I'm trying to keep in mind while I'm trying to, the multitasking is not my strong suit. So one bullet point, maybe two or three, but trying to keep in mind a dozen is just not good.
Seen it after, I sensed, well, I know from two that I saw, but I sensed us writing distracted the students. For some of them, you could see the eyes go over and they would say something and someone would write in. So they handled it well, but I would hate our, you know, making it like it's a test, right?
No, yeah, no, no.
They fit, you know, they had no idea what we're writing. We could, we could, you know, unintended consequences of disrupting their flow because they're, they handled it very well.
It's quantum learning, just by observing it for messing it up.
So would it be helpful if I took like a snippet of it and we did it again, maybe, our next word, we, I think, are we all together here in May? Yes, maybe in May and, and did some more specific and.
That'd be great.
I guess I'm trying to figure out why I need to be an expert at this as far as what I saw, whether I had this in front of me or not. We've been, we've shown all those posters, we've seen the student learning outcomes. So as I watched them, it was clear, there was literacy, there was science, those things were clear to me whether I had this in front of me or not. And I'm, I, I don't think my calibration on this is reading the school. It's informing me as to, if somebody calls and says, you know, I don't really think they're learning a thing in that school, I could very easily say, have you looked at any of the teachers' websites? Have you, you know, the presentation, you might want to go on Orca and see the presentation? What is your concern? I'm never going to get a phone call like that, I can just tell you. But I don't think I would refer somebody to what I observed or how I saw it here, but knowing those student learning outcomes, which we've had in our face every time we have a carousel meeting or on the websites, I think is more the informative part that's important to me versus understanding this rubric really well.
Well, that sort of gets at the purpose of the board monitoring, like that's the why, why are we doing board monitoring? What drove us to, to develop the board monitoring guidelines and the form? And I think it's just trying to quantify, you know.
I mean, this guided the.
Nobody's ever gonna look at a form that we've done, but we can say, we've done, we have formalized a little bit our, our monitoring role. And this is, right, this is one of the things that we do to sort of check that box.
But if Ruben had a three next to global citizenship and I didn't, it's how we interpreted what they, because I did turn it over for global citizen and saw it was civics and economics and geography, world language, so I thought, okay, that was. But if I just saw the term global citizenship, maybe I didn't see anything that I thought. But yet, if that's your social studies, your new term for social studies, which it is, then I saw that.
So I think because of what you just said, that's why, it would be nice to do it together with, with you and just try to connect the dots because, you know, I've read this to enough of this many times, but I'm, I'm kind of a visual learner too, so seeing it together and having the time to discuss it with you guys, it would be, you know, maybe you make me see something that I'm not seeing, you know, because we see things different, so we could learn from, from each other, but that's just me.
Snippet from an actual class happening. I don't know if people would be comfortable with that or not, but.
Oh, sure, I'm sure they would. And I had thought about that originally when we were going to do it last time and I didn't have time to get kids together.
Oh, I thought this was great. I'm not saying we didn't like this, but this is a big deal for people to have to be out and be here and.
But it's all, and it was good for them to see you and then like this happens every week.
That's one tip, said, do you do this every Tuesday? I said, no, we do that. Oh, I said, we meet once a month.
But that awareness, that's important.
Well, when Stephen called us, I said, I think Stephen's trying to get the meeting going, so we're not here till midnight. He said, how would you do your meetings though? I said, well. And that's when he asked me if we met every week.
Any final thoughts?
It's a good start.
Yeah, it's great.
And there's so many other ways for you to, to engage in this and without having 16 kids come, but. Yeah, I think I was just.
That was super cool to have.
They were very proud of us. And they, they actually identified, basically, the only thing I asked it was, do you have any students who would like to come to present to the board something around student learning outcomes? And they came up with, so these are all things that they have been working on in this, you know, within the last month or so. But they, they identified, well, we'd like to do the poetry and we would like to share the green screen and we want to share, so this is completely student-designed.
Would, would you relay our thanks back to them all?
Yes.
Because it's sort of, because everybody wondered, hell, we didn't have sort of a place to.
And there were a few who were really disappointed they weren't capable to come, who wanted to share.
I would just wanted to add that, I mean, this part of, of the monitoring practice is a work in progress. So if it's not working for you or if you want more information or less, then let us know. The most important thing is that it, that you're monitoring the student learning outcomes, which is awesome. And I think that we're looking for ways above and beyond the data presentations, right, to actually put those student learning outcomes right there for you all to see the evidence. And, you know, having students come and share their work is probably the best way to do that, but just continue to give us feedback because we can, we'll tweak this as, as, we want it to be useful for you as well.
I think about, you know, another opportunity, the robotics presentation that happened at the last meeting at U32, right? Another great example of so many other SLOs that, to see firsthand, you actually think, wow, this is what you're doing.
Yes.
All righty, I think it's time for 3.2, school safety, which we covered.
I was just wondering if there was any feedback on, from the state, specific to our school?
No. You mean after they came, so they came to visit? I've not heard anything. And I don't, I don't know that I will, or I'm not sure. I know they were collecting all the data. I'm assuming they're probably still visiting schools.
Well, they've done 95 or 96%. I've seen the cumulative data, I just haven't seen data specific to us.
I mean, just anecdotally, while he was here, he said, you guys are in good shape. That, that was kind of his blanket statement, but I've not heard anything specific.
I, I read the report that you sent us and I did, I, I took some, some notes and some of it also said that, you know, it was confidential, so I don't know, when we talk about, I, I thought there were three things which you had talked about maybe doing too, so the two extra cameras, the outdoor speakers, which I didn't was aware of, but that could be a good idea. So there's some things that, should we wait for that state report? Or some things that we might want to do now? And then the other question I had, because I didn't know this, do we now have a strong public safety presence at the, at the meetings? Because that was the other thing that he was suggesting that we needed to have to, so that it was a public safety team instead of a public, instead of a safety, what is that we call it at Washington Central?
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
So that the, so state police and the firemen were, had more presence here so that the kids were more familiar with them, so that if they came one or two times, and then if some of those members were part of your safety, safety team, it would be a safe, so that was one of the requirements. So I was wondering where we are with that because that seems like an easy one, that if we incorporated them into the planning at Washington Central for, for, for everybody, that would be a first easy step.
The leadership team talked briefly about this today and we, one of the next steps that we are going to take, so Amy Molina at U32 kind of is spearheading a lot of this work and she's done a lot of the work around school safety. She, a next step is she's going to meet with the elementary building principals and we're going to kind of review just our procedures and compare that, because one of the things that we talked about is having consistency across all schools, consistency between elementary and middle and high, so that the language is the same, the expectations are the same. So that's all coming next. The, thinking about what you had mentioned, shortly after this building was built, and I'm guessing it's just because the fire department was here so much during construction, that they, we had a pretty close relationship with them for a few years, where they came, they did presentations with kids, they dressed up, they made it a really fun event. We haven't done that in a couple of years and, you know, they come in and. We do other things around the holidays with them and kids see them come to pick up gift baskets or do different things, but it's not something that we have really formalized. It's tricky, we've, especially because being out here, we only have the state police and so, I mean, the local fire department is very easy. We invite them to the, our place, then they come in and they have lunch with the kids. But you never know for the state police, right? There is no local, so it's, it's a little bit harder for us to have a relationship. Like when I was teaching at Montclair, we just, we knew who they were, they were in our buildings, all the kids knew them. It looks a little bit different out here. So we haven't done a lot around that.
So will you mention to Amy about maybe bringing them into the table? So apparently we form a public safety team, that's the only.
Right, I think that is more in cities or towns that have a police department.
Right.
Who they're the same people.
Service officer.
Where ours switch all the time depending on who's in this week or this, because it's just a contract with the sheriff's department or the state police.
Right. We'll definitely have that with the fire department.
Yeah, so with the fire chief.
It's relatively consistent on the state police.
It's.
Meaning, I mean.
Yeah, there's not them.
They've gotten pulled over and it was the same.
Well, now we have a sheriff that lives out here and a state police that lives out by us, so I do see them, but they don't necessarily patrol this neighborhood.
Right. Well, and it was my impression from the state report, it was less about having them in the school for the students to see and more having them on the team to learn their expertise.
Exactly.
And that was one of the things that, when Officer Brown came to interview me about our procedures, you know, he, those are, they had an intern, sorry, an intern from Norwich who was working with the state police, who came to interview me much earlier this year, long before this kind of became such a hot topic. And so they do have, like the state police does have our, the building layout and the door plan and the, I mean, the escape plan and, you know, they do have all of that. And there, that was one thing that this Norwich intern, that was his project, was to go through all of the middle sets, barracks, you know, their geographical area and make sure to get all of the school's information so that could be updated. And that did happen this year, which is, it hadn't happened in my time here before that, so that was, I think that they are trying to get, have more of a presence or at least an understanding of what, how we operate.
I think if it, I would encourage that it become, at least in the near term, year or two, like a, a standard item on leadership team agenda.
Agenda, yes.
Just so that it's, it's one of, I think it's one of, it should become one of those things that, you know, so we talk about school board monitoring, that's something that we should monitor, right? You know, this camera's broken, okay? And now it's a year later and that camera's still broken. Well, you know, didn't you understand this 12 months ago? Alicia, when we said we want that camera fixed and it's not fixed?
Yeah.
You know, I'm just facetious, but I think that for boards, it would be something I'll mention at the executive committee tomorrow.
Yeah.
Until we're comfortable, which we should never be, but at least uncomfortable.
Not being reactive, I think is important, which is a little bit of what has happened recently.
I think we're really, everything, you know, majority of what we do is geared to what happens if.
Right.
As compared to how do we prevent this.
Right. And to be more preventative.
Okay. Way on to reports to the board, administration.
Can I just go with mine?
Yeah, you go.
Just start with. So grading and reporting, the last bullet on the survey. Do you have that? Could you, could you give me a summary of that tomorrow?
Tomorrow?
By tomorrow?
Yeah, so I, we haven't looked at it as a staff yet, but I absolutely have like the, a general summary.
You know, a few bullet points on it. It's just, this is a topic of discussion at the executive committee meeting tomorrow.
Oh, sure.
So I would like to have just whatever you think, just 70 or eight, however many parents responded.
Eighty-two now.
And these were the top, these were the top two or three takeaways? That's all. Don't, just five minutes worth of your work, it takes more than that to do it.
I'm happy to do that. Let me just. I'm happy to do that. Let me just tell you, just really briefly, because this is, so we are, we are, at the end of the year, this really is geared towards changing practices for next year. And my hope was to have this be some baseline data for us around how parents are feeling, we communicate and different types of communication. But I'll just kind of, there, there are only a very few questions. But the information was their, their current grade level of their child, the teacher's name. And the reason I ask for teachers' names is I actually have a stack for each teacher of individual responses so they can get personal feedback, which I think is going to be important. But I have school-wide information that I can share with you.
Yeah, that's all I would be interested in.
But it's just about the frequency of communication from the classroom's teacher, the classroom teacher, whether or not they read that, whether or not they access the website, and then what types of information they look for on the website. Whether or not they read the school-wide newsletter and blackboard emails and what information is most valuable to them as a parent. And there was a whole list that it was just checkboxes. And then the last question was, what would be helpful to have more communication around from either the school or your child's teacher so that we could get feedback? Part of this is, so looking ahead to next, one is we need to be more consistent as a school in our communication. Well, some teachers who share every single day, we have some weekly, we have some, you know, this can be, this monthly. And then the other piece is what is it that parents want to know? And then also thinking about opening up the Infinite Campus Parent Portal next year. So there's that information, right, that parents are going to see. And then there's this other kind of, you know, what do, parents love the pictures and they love to know what the upcoming events are and they love the school menu, you know, so we really wanted to know what, what is most helpful. We got some really specific feedback though, so I'm happy to.
And like I said, just.
Yeah, that's.
It's going to be one of the three focus points of the Washington, of the entire board.
Okay.
Communication, community engagement, so it's very appropriate. Sorry if I continue asking the question. What's the maximum class size of a pre-k can be?
Well, that's a good question. Two different numbers, I'll tell you. The room can take 18. We had up to 18 last, last school year, not this year, and it was too many for the staff. We've capped it at 16.
I, I'm not suggesting 14 is too small, it's just that.
28 is too big.
No, no, no. I, I think, I think 14 is, I'm, I'm comfortable with that class size. But you say we have more coming.
Yeah.
So I'm conscious budget-wise, if it's, if there's, you know, three or four more coming, and that's okay.
Yeah.
And if there's 20 coming, that's okay because we hired another teacher, financially it makes sense. But if there's eight coming.
What do we do? And we've had that, we've had a waitlist.
So we'll cap it at 16?
That's what we did this year and it definitely felt much more, I have to say, safe and cool. There are more coming by the ones and twos, not dozens.
Not enough for another class yet.
And the new hire is a point four?
The new hire is a point four. It got posted officially yesterday.
It was a little weird in the wording. Is the person only working Tuesday?
Monday and Tuesday. So right now we have two, it's, we have had an amazing setup that has worked, but it's no longer going to work.
So that person works all day Monday and Tuesday, so they have a morning session, afternoon?
No, it's, it's one session, so it's ten, so we have, the way that it's worked now is we have two staff. We have Jamie O'Hare and then we have Beth Downing. So Beth is here on Mondays and Tuesdays for one of our 10-hour sessions. And then she works at Callis the other three days and Jamie comes in and does the other 10-hour session. So we have two classes in the same room over five days. So we have a two-day session and a three-day session. The tricky thing, it worked beautifully because it worked for Beth and it worked for us. But now Callis has so many new kids, which is awesome for them. They need to have two sessions and we still need to have two sessions. So it's a point four. We do have a number, so I posted it yesterday and there are a number of applicants already. We're hoping to interview next week, so that's good. I didn't know if we would get much.
I would think that'd be attractive to somebody who wants a part-time job.
Yeah.
Jamie.
Yeah. It works, it's worked.
I know. I think I can see somebody really, I just, I was still thinking it was one of those where one teacher did morning sessions and one did afternoon sessions.
So they're, they're, it's a longer day, but it's just one set of kids per day in that room.
Now I had one more question, but it's primarily for the board, but administrators can, are welcome. But on the bottom of page five, spring hirings, the first bullet. One of the topics for discussion at the executive committee tomorrow night is special educator hiring process. So I didn't know if, if any, anyone was uncomfortable with the process that we go through. So Alicia, I think Kelly's, there's a group of administrators and teachers or, there's a group. So for, for special educators in this school, Alicia's on the interview team. They make a recommendation to the executive committee and we either, you know, we hire the person or we don't hire the person because special ed is hired. So there's, there's going to be some discussion on, is that the way we want to do it? Are we comfortable with that? So I just, knowing that that's a topic, are we comfortable the way it's working for us here?
Can I explain the process? It's, because it's a little bit more than that.
Okay.
So we had two, kind of two levels of interviewing. The first, so we had four open positions for special educators across the supervisory union. And we agreed that it would make more sense to kind of do it all as one rather than having all these separate committees happening. So there was a representative from each school who had an opening and we did the first round of interviews. So we kind of just like, is this person a, would they be a good candidate for one of our schools? Yes or no, basically. And then we offered the teachers to tell us, you know, so some are geared toward middle and high school. Of course, we're not going to have them work here, right, or vice versa. Then there was a second round of interviews that happened at the individual schools. And that's when, so Sheila Patterson, one of my special educators, and I participated in that first round of kind of just vetting. And then we brought back the candidates that we felt would be good matches for the elementary school into our buildings. And then we had like a parent, a teacher, a para, you know, more of a representative and we dug a little bit deeper. So we did second round interviews that way. And then it was the individual schools who made the recommendation for hire of these four special educators. So it kind of, it was two steps. First, the initial, you know, is this person qualified and licensed and should they be in one of our schools? And then there was the deeper.
Did you feel like that was a good, robust process?
Yes. It, it is a little tricky and we worked it out. But say you have two great candidates in four positions and how are you going to fight them? Who gets them, right? And we had agreed this time around that really the candidate needs to want to be in the school, right? So if, one example is we had a candidate coming from Burlington and really didn't want to go to one of the off-the-beaten-past schools and only wanted to go to Berlin because for her that commute was doable. And we honored that and said, you know, of course. And so she only did a second interview at Berlin. So those kind of details we had to work out. Special educators are hard to find and so, and we had a lot of openings and that, I still think there are openings, actually.
There's a lot of openings.
But I did feel like that was a good helping process.
So the discussion will be around boards making the decision and not administrators making the decision, that the board should be involved with the interview?
Each individual board?
Each individual board should, should make the decision on special educators that get referred to the executive committee.
Executive committee is made up of representatives from every board, so.
Just, we're comfortable with the way we're doing it, or the way it's being done. I am, but I just wanted to.
Yes. And I think one of the points that Alicia made that's important to me, even though the person is from the central office level, having them visit the school and be interviewed knowing that I feel comfortable in this school or, yeah, this school is. I don't want somebody telling me I have to be in, now down the road, if an opening, like the school's population goes down, that person should have the right to go to the other school if that's the way we're doing it from a central office. And they don't have to, they can always go get another job. But I think that part was important to me, that it not be just Bill and Kelly and maybe Jen making a decision and allotting people. But, or, no. These people go through enough interviews.
Yeah. If, you know, if you let, you know, who I think you're alluding to, if you let them know that, because I didn't even know about that other part. I was comfortable the way it was, but that, that again sort of honors that it's going to be the CEO of that building is who's, you know, as a board member, I'm not going to be working with that person. It should be the chemistry that works for that.
We're comfortable.
So I think, yes.
The other thing I like about the way it is, it allows us, from my, when I was chair, from that perspective, it allowed our SU to be nimble.
Yeah, and move faster.
It didn't, you didn't add a month or two to the process and by then the person's not available anymore.
People get grabbed up fast.
Yeah, I can't see an upside of getting boards involved. Where if three administrators go, oh my God, you know, Sue Jones is available, can you believe it? I don't know what happened, but let's, let's jump right away and see if she's interested in this. I, I don't know exactly how it goes, but I would anticipate this.
It can happen that way.
Okay. That's all I needed. I just wanted, I just wanted some specific feedback when it comes up.
Yeah.
Apologize for hijacking your report.
No.
I had one question on the report and I, it just might be that I read it wrong, but I just read it again from my letter notes. So is it Michael Sherman will be our part-time behavioral coach?
No, so, well, he's, he's going to, yes, he's going to continue what he's doing.
Oh, oh. Part-time behavior interventionist and part-time behaviorist.
So part of his world is kids, a very big part. And another part of his world is helping build capacity with adults in the building, right? Like by going into classrooms, by modeling, by helping build systems for kids, by coaching teachers around behavior in the classroom. So, and that's, that's all what he does anyway.
Yes. Yeah, and that's, that's fine. I didn't know how to read, even when I went down below, it said part-time behavioral interventions, part-time behavioral coach. I didn't know if it was the same and similarly we were losing him to part-time, so I was, yeah.
I, I won't ever say like 50 percent because this really depends on the day. It could be 110 percent of his day is kids. Or it could be, you know, 40 percent on a day. So it's, kids always come first, interventions always happen because kids are there. And then, then he's also working to build capacity with our teachers.
Great.
So I made a note on that too and I didn't say anything because I'd said so many things.
Oh, oh, okay.
But I agree with Flor, maybe it could be, it's the language.
It's the language, it was a little confusing.
If it said, Michael Sherman, and it doesn't have to be this wording, but is, is primarily a behavioral interventionist and as time permits, he, he does behavioral coaching.
But isn't that the same?
Because when I saw it, I'm like, oh, we only need a part-time behavioral interventionist now?
Or maybe just, maybe the separate, I don't know, sorry.
I think if it's a, he's, he's primarily doing behavioral intervention.
He's doing behavior all day, 100 percent.
Well, that's what I want to get across. I don't want somebody to think that suddenly we have extra, you know.
Or there's no behavior.
You know, like, yeah, or money.
I agree with Flor. It's like, oh, he doesn't have enough to do now, so we're going to have him do some behavioral coaching. And that's not what the reality is and that's not what we want to express. He does behavioral coaching when he can fit it in.
Well, it's not even that. So part of it might be just thinking about, it's been a number of years since he's been in this position and since we really talked about it. But like a lot of what he does is working with classroom teachers around behavior, whether it's tier one, you know, all kids behavior and just setting up systems for behavior, or it's kids who need special, like check-in, check-out interventions, or it's, you know, going hands-on with kids. But he, it kind of runs the gamut. But a lot of what, a lot of his day is in classrooms, supporting teachers to support kids. Because there's one Michael and he cannot be in every classroom, you know, all day long. We have to build that capacity with teachers. So if, you know, whether it's putting a little, you know, quiet space for a child who needs that in a classroom and helping a teacher design that and checking in with a student around it, or it's, you know, whatever it is. So I, but I do understand it's, it's all around interventions, but it's.
Or Michael Sherman is a ba, is behavioral interventionist in.
Just take that out the part-time on the top.
Slash coach.
And, and coach.
The only people that ever sit in his car are you, so.
No, no, it's okay.
Oh, all right.
Okay, okay.
Well, and there's coaches everywhere in here.
Yeah. Yeah. So I got confused. I totally understand now.
He has full time being there.
Yep. Well, it's a learning opportunity for you as administrators, how you use language.
I'll make sure not to put that in the newsletter.
As a board officer. Okay. Moving on to the fiscal report.
So we're really, I'm just looking there, nothing has changed in the last few months, I assume this. We have asked teachers, the work closing down accounts for the year. We've asked teachers right before April break to start wrapping up. You're going to see in May and then definitely after June, the close down of the year. But there's nothing that.
Nothing unusual?
No. No, nothing that stands out.
Executive committee.
No, I have a question on this, on the financial.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. I guess I was just, I must have had extra time at work this.
It's on the Thursday.
I just, I said this is my weekend.
It feels like it's Friday. I don't think I had extra time at work. Not anything right away, but we, the really good, we just got that spreadsheet last board meeting on the planned replacement capital plan.
Yes, yes, capital, yes.
Yeah. Excuse me. If we could tie the projected available funds to that, because what struck me, I looked at the number and I'm like, oh, that's great work, this great number. But the reality is, all kinds of that number is already spent, right?
What number?
The projected available.
Projected available funds for capital improvement, which is almost 700,000 now.
Based on the capital plan.
Right. So if that, if those funds can be tied to the capital plan so that even though all that money's in there, we know 100,000 of it's for a roof in 10 years and 50,000 of it, I don't know, is to replace windows in five years. So it's not this big lump sum there. It's, it's, I think what you were alluding to, the money's not really there. It's just earmarked for something in the future. It would be, it would be useful for me to be able to see what it's earmarked for. And I think it would be good for, you know, if a community member comes in and says, wow, you got all that money, you know, or, you know, how come it doesn't tax break or those kind of things? We can say, well, it is there and this is why it's there. So in five years, we don't need a $500,000 bond because 100 of it's going here and, you know, 250 is going here and that kind of thing.
I think that's a really good suggestion.
Yeah.
It's effectively drawn down to, there's $80,000 that's like unallocated out of that 700,000.
Well, and it helps inform, it helps, it helps inform us when we're adding money each year or if we are going to add money. I mean, if we see we've got this much and we're only projected to use 500,000 over 10 years, then, you know, maybe we're not adding 50 or 60 a year. Or conversely, we see, oh geez, here's an unexpected cost. You know, maybe we add a little more this year than we might normally add for a year or two to bulk it up in anticipation of that need.
Yeah, and I think it might be, I agree with you, Stephen. I think it might be a little hard to pinpoint each exact cost because the costs are going to change depending on the year that, that is done. Maybe we could allocate.
An estimate or.
Yeah, or we maybe could allocate percentages because. Yeah, or we, maybe we could allocate percentages, because like I could see this year probably investing quite a bit of money to safety that we might thought we were not going to use right now, so like saying, I don't know, 40% is mechanic, there's going to be 15% of this that is going to be furniture, you know, I'm just.
I think it's earmarking, but I don't think it's prescriptive.
Right.
Yeah.
It's anticipated that we will need.
Use it for something else if something comes up, but this is why we have put this money aside.
Right. It's not just for fun.
So is that spreadsheet on the, is that called deferred maintenance? Anyway, the projected.
The capital plan.
Capital plan. That, I don't care if it's a percentage or an approximation.
Yeah, because I think it'll be easier to earmark it a percentage.
Typically, we anticipate it's going to cost this much or whatever.
Trying to get estimates from everybody right now would be a lot of.
It adds value to that.
No, not estimates.
It's not just a number.
Just a round number.
Right. But we, but we do have the numbers for what all of the things cost and their projected lifespan, so.
Right.
Yeah, so that's what I, yeah.
There's, you can break that down.
Cause that was in the spreadsheet.
Those two pieces of information that go with the, the cost new and the lifespan.
Right. So then you put an inflator on it, it's going to cost the next time, yeah. Okay.
They can all be a summer project, but yes, I can hit that.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying, the amount of time that.
By tomorrow.
Like that.
Just one other thing.
I can help with that.
The actual expense here to date, I think we were going to remove the 1200 from there because it didn't actually come from.
Yeah, yep. You are right. And I know it got into the notes because I saw it.
Yes.
So, I'll make sure. That's a glorious.
Now, please do remember. So you've heard more about what's on the agenda for tomorrow night. We're going to talk about the board goals, so the three goals that came out of the last full board meeting, communication, board monitoring, I forget the third one, but the executive committee was tasked with putting some meat to that before the full board meeting. So we're talking about those three. The hiring for special educators is on the agenda, a retreat is on the agenda. I think that's most of what's being dealt with tomorrow night, so I'll have some more feedback after. I mean, the last executive one was just more of a reorganization, there wasn't anything particular in that.
I will share that Matt called me today just to express his regret, he was hoping to make it, but he had another commitment. And relayed the talking points that Steve just relayed. So he was feeling, I don't know what he was feeling, I think he was feeling like he was, like he wanted to be here but couldn't and didn't want us to feel sort of in the cold.
No, no.
Because he's going to meet other meetings that he didn't make this one, so.
I don't think that's the expectation he goes to.
No, no.
No, I, I don't feel that way at all. And I don't think that's his intent to make it to every school board meeting in the district either, but I think he was, you know, there's some of this work around the board goals and stuff that he wanted to flesh out a little bit, so, so I just wanted to relay that I had had that conversation with him.
Thank you.
Policy committee?
We didn't meet.
Easy enough. Action agenda.
Can, can I just, I'll share something from, we, we did, Stephen and I both attended the, the community engagement retreat or, you know, just, that's Saturday before, before vacation and we, we have some stuff that we could share at another meeting with you, with you guys, but like you said, as part of the focus of the executive committee, so it would be great to have, allocate some time, maybe our next meeting to talk about what, what we would like to do and propose to.
That was a VSBA.
That was a VSBA and it was from Public Agenda and it was very similar to the other ones that I had attended.
Tree groups, elaborately presented.
But that's true. So it was a VSBA and they, so Nicole presented more about how the law is involved in making sure that this public engagement stays within the open meeting law and she gave some good.
Hopefully they don't think weird things about Eastmont Hills school board members, I'm sorry guys, but as is typical with me, I.
Yeah, I was close enough to elbow him, right next to him.
No, I was thinking about the interactive thing.
Oh, yeah, we did some interactive things.
Where you could be closer to the bullseye or further away from the bullseye. Well, it was the first one, that there, there are some students in your school that don't feel safe either at school or at home. So everyone was kind of floating and I went right to the bullseye. And everyone was like, so they said, why are you at the bullseye? I said, well, I said later to a small group, I said, why wasn't everyone in the bullseye? They said, some students in your school don't feel safe either at school or at home? It would seem pretty reasonable to me that there would be one or two kids in 200 that don't feel safe at school or at home.
Yeah. It was a great experiment, especially with community engagement, because once we were able to talk about, so some of us were close to the middle, Stephen was in the middle, and it happened, different questions. But then once they, the facilitator, which was a high school student that was being taught in facilitation, which was actually, actually really valuable to see, and also we talked about the possibility of having a student leadership person come to our meetings too once in a while. He, once you asked them why they were there, there were, people had to understand the question sometimes different to what we had understood the question, and they have valid points to where they were, or sometimes they hadn't understand the question, which also goes into how we not communicate really clearly. But it was a good, it was a good introduction and they talked a lot about things that Essex had done and they, I created a little list that I shared with Stephen and maybe we can talk about it at our next meeting and if there's another opportunity for anybody, they, they pretty much are running kind of the same presentation, so if it comes around again, it'll be helpful for somebody else to be able to go.
I'll go if I get to elbow Stephen.
Yes.
He was good.
Can elbow me if you swear at me?
No.
Or beat me if I.
No, he was, he was really good.
On to the action agenda?
Text, yeah.
Oh, that's great. Approve transfer capital fund.
I thought it was going to be like the doors.
There was nothing in there.
Transfer from the capital fund that we maybe.
From the.
From capital for the.
No, we should, no, usually it's when we have funds left from the previous year that we.
Was it just left on there from an old agenda?
I really don't know what it is and I've just been looking at the last three months minutes to try to figure out what that is.
I don't know.
So I'm going to make this easy, nobody knows what the heck this is, so we're just going to take no action on that.
Nope.
Approve hire of classroom teacher.
So we wrapped up a, I have to say, this is probably the, we had over 80 applicants for the first grade position, which in my time here, that's the most applicants we've had for any position. It was really hard. We had a lot, such a range of candidates from, not graduated from college yet, just about to get, you know, first year in their career, to those who have been teaching for many, many years. We interviewed a lot, I feel like we interviewed nine because it was just so hard and I kept thinking the whole time, looking on SchoolSpring, am I missing someone on there who's like amazing? Cause there was just so much to read through. But we invited three back to do a demonstration lesson, second round interviews, all incredible candidates. We deliberated for a long time over this one. And in the end, we selected the person we felt like would be the best match for this school. Very excited, she met with Bill yesterday and I would like to recommend, her name is Jessica Pacura.
I knew she wasn't available when we called her back.
Other schools wanted her as well, so I bring her to, recommend her for hire for our first grade classroom teacher position.
I highly recommend her.
Very highly. And Lindy also interviewed her at her school for a position.
And the principal, when I called for the reference, said, well, I know she's being observed tomorrow by Eastmont Hill year. I was like, yes, I'm thinking of her.
I think she was a finalist in Oregon one place, but she chose us.
So what's at her part?
What's what?
What's at her part? Let me bring it in.
Oh gosh, so she actually is, she is only a one-year in teacher, she graduated from UVM last May, and her principal describes her as a first-year teacher who really looks like a fifth-year teacher. She has incredible, incredible classroom management. She has been teaching, which is really hard, you know, 18 students in a one, two classroom. She has taught them everything, so she's had to teach first and second grade, math, literacy, and everything in a mixed grade. She's figured out how to make it work in one year pretty quickly. And also in her year, in her first year, she was able to really quickly identify areas of growth, what she wants to work on, why she wants to be here, and they were all, she was very genuine, honest, honest and genuine, like, yeah, in the fall, I felt like I needed to learn a little bit more about literacy, I didn't get all that I needed at UVM, and so she took the class, worked with the literacy coach there. The second semester, she took a course in math at St. Mike's and is, she's a lifelong learner and she's only, what, maybe 23? Doing this for not, not very long at all, but came across as incredibly strong. And very, very highly recommended from her colleagues and her supervisor. So, is that, yeah, it was a long process and it was, it was a really hard one. She went up against some very strong veteran teachers that.
There's some good people up there right now.
There are some great people.
Is it so flooded because of like cutbacks or?
Her situation where she is, she had, she was ripped, budget cuts. Their budget still hasn't passed in the school that she was in.
And it's tiny.
But all different reasons, really.
Well, do we still draw a lot from out of state as well?
There were a lot from out of state. And a lot of about to graduate, which is great. I'm sure there's, I'm sure of those 82, there are many promising teachers in that.
I would make a motion that we approve the principal's recommendation for classroom teacher hire.
And here's, sorry, there's copies.
Is there any further discussion of the potential buyer?
Just thank you for doing it.
Yes, maybe that's.
She also has special ed certification.
That's, thank you.
I just remembered.
She was the only one, yes, that did come to the top, thank you. She was the only candidate who's dual certified in elementary ed and special ed, which is a big, major bonus for us. She will be our first classroom teacher here who is licensed, licensed in special ed.
Does she tell you?
F E C U R, yeah, F E C U R A.
Tell you she has an identical twin?
No. You learn more about her.
Well, it came up in our interview because her identical twin is also a teacher.
Oh.
And some people from her school were going to a conference and she knew her sister was going to be there. And she couldn't decide whether to tell them or not tell them. And then the principal told me the same story when I talked to him, because he said, I was sitting there, luckily she had told me because it was really eerie.
Wow.
But they are identical twins. And James's son had a situation where he dated somebody who he's married, Gina, at UVM, she didn't tell him she had an identical twin. And he had had his first date and thought it went great and the next day saw her on campus and said, hey! And she didn't say hey back! So we had an identical twin little story in our meeting, or our interview, but she just seemed like a great match.
Yeah. We're very excited.
All righty. All those in favor of hiring Jessica Pacura, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
In hopes that May meeting I'll bring a pre-k teacher for.
What do you?
Board order.
Oh, I, it went that way, 17 something.
Sure, I make a motion to approve the board orders for $17,223.50.
I'll second that. Discussion of the board order. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, sorry. Can we skip this?
Excellent.
What did we do?
We did that when Bill, oh, you weren't here.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we did that when Bill had to leave. So he was here.
You're funding the salary increase for the bargaining employees, just 2.6% for some and 3.5% for the others.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
Okay. That brings us to future agenda items, which I've added the VSBA community engagement. Anything else?
We planned, in the summer, there's usually a retreat, has that?
Hasn't happened.
Okay. That probably should be a future board, because everybody's calendars get filled up.
Yeah, so we probably should just at the board calendar again, next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. Board communication, anything to put under there? That brings us to a job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, Gina, we should have come up with some stuff to try to put you on the spot.
You know what, no, no worries, the student presentation goes.
Or Bill, you instructed me to go easy on school seats. So, you know, I don't have any special things. Thank you all.
Thank you.